Good to go.
All right, it is seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting board. First item on the agenda is that we have to add our liquor items, liquor licenses to the items under six point five.
Make a motion to add your licenses as item number six dot five.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Glenn to add that liquor licenses under six point five to the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Well, any opposed? All right, we are part of the agenda, the public comments. And that's where anybody on the call or not in or in the room is not on the agenda can weigh in on whatever topic of their choice. So, is there anybody on the call?
There's Roger.
There's Roger on the call. Roger, do you have anything to say?
The life down here, yourself, Roger.
If not.
Oh, this way, of course. Yes. I'm only here for one thing because I gotta go. I just want to say as a member of that, the subcommittee for the wastewater, I was quite dismayed that the meeting for this week is being canceled. We have a lot of other things to discuss and to go over and just because the government employees cannot be here for whatever reason or turnover should not preclude us from meeting. I'll respect it, Dan, but I think we, since we know the Yellow Barn property is no good, Mac Molding is not good, East Arlington, and we were discussing other things we need to meet to get things going. And I know you probably cannot comment because it would be considered most likely a public meeting that's not warned. I just wanted to give you my two cents, I'm just, I'm just quite dismayed.
Okay. And, and if there's other members with me here, if you guys want to put it back on the agenda, we do have enough time to warn meeting. If that is your preference.
Good. So, I think the other thing is the idea, the whole idea of the pump outs. And I think that we were gonna be exploring how other places do it or organize it. And so, I don't know if it's worth having a meeting on Wednesday or not. But I think that we need to keep that item particularly on the agenda if some of the bigger ones are, are not. I don't know, I don't know if it's worth meeting or not.
I'm not opposed to maybe.
Yeah, we can absolutely have a, a meeting, we can keep it quiet, it's not, if they're, or keep it.
And then we can flush some of that stuff out.
Yeah, I could easily get that back on the agenda and, and anyway, we'll say scheduling matters are always allowed to be discussed by email. You want to respond, you know, like that, and say, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't, I just put it on the agenda, I had to go in. That is legal, I said definitely passing muster for a meeting.
I know, I just know the last time when I responded to an email, it was please do not respond because, say, we.
Scheduling is an exemption to that. So, you're absolutely allowed to say, hey, we should have this meeting.
So, that'll be seven o'clock on Wednesday.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, and you'll let the other people.
Yeah, I will give that warn, I will get the warning back up.
You want to reschedule it and notify everybody and we're good. Minus the state person.
Yeah.
We can still.
Well, minus, minus the contractors, any state stuff, if we can just talk about whatever other business of the community.
I don't know if I can be there, but you don't need me.
That's up to you.
Okay.
You can zoom in if you want.
But yeah, we'll get, we'll get that back up. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have a deal with my brother and his liver cancer.
Oh, no.
He just got the news today. On top of these, on top of the, on top of the.
I'm sorry, Steve. Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, Roger, do you have anything?
Yes, I was wondering if there was an update on the food shelf.
Um, I believe we can operate under the previous, previous authorizations on that and you should have the letter and the insurance stuff tomorrow. So, I will, I will have an update for you when I am back in, in office tomorrow morning, we'll pull the, the paperwork. But yeah, we had a previous authorization on that to, to say what we could and couldn't do. And that has not been presented at any point. So, we will get, I will get that over to you in the morning.
Okay, an email or text would be better.
It'll be in writing by email, you'll, we'll be getting, getting you a document as well that, that will include a copy of the insurance form.
And you've got his email, yeah?
I have his email for him to read, so, yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, we truly appreciate it.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. I want you to stay if you want.
And then Lance, are you on for the speeding item? Sorry.
The one I answered. Uh, for the speeding.
Um, okay. No, no. You should, you should be on for this meeting item.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, uh, that concludes public comments and the next item is approving the minutes of the twelve sixteen meeting.
Or shouldn't be four sixteen, sorry. Oh, my gosh, that's very, I, I confused where I thought I got in there, uh, but the previous meeting.
Previous meeting.
Which would have been two weeks ago tonight.
Which should be the twenty.
Twenty seven, there we go.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of January twenty seventh as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the minutes of the meeting of January twenty seventh. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Just for the record, Jamie will be a few minutes late, maybe a half an hour as he is driving kids for a basketball game in Benton. So, when he gets here, he gets here. Uh, five point one, five, five is highways, five point one Murray Hollow Culvert.
Okay. You have in your agenda packet, a, a landowner agreement, uh, which is the one that, that has the, it's called a habitat restoration agreement and then an operations and maintenance plan. So, this was supplied by, here, and so, it was proud and loaded. And you all have this been a long running project, so we, I guess, for the people watching, you know, Jacob here had started this project, how long ago was that?
I think like twenty twenty one.
Yeah, so, um, and it's, it would replace the existing large culvert on Murray Hollow Road with a larger structure that will be better for the passage of fish, better for the health of the environment. And we get a free, oh, large culvert out of this, which is a project that, uh, it, that typically runs in the tens of thousands of dollars. So, win for everyone and Jacob, can you answer any questions on this?
I have, I have two questions, one is, um, how long will it take and what will traffic be doing in the meantime?
So, the plan is that all said and done, it could take probably two weeks as long as conditions are good.
Right.
Um, through that time, the road closure for people accessing the camps up the road would be three to five days, we would hope. Because the temporary road would make it super complicated, so we went for full road closure. Um, and the conservation fund seemed like they'd be able to convey the closure to those camps or the less seas at least.
Because that's really important.
Well, and dance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, like, put things on the camp, try to contact people, record or whatever, because I think we don't want really irate people.
I don't want that either.
We don't want anyone, we want anyone to already be up there when we start the project.
That's true, that's true.
We don't want anyone to be up there in general starting a fire that we could then have to respond to. We want there to be no activity accessible from this road now.
Okay, so that's, that's really important. The other thing is, um, I totally understand the need for the bigger culvert. But one comment I have is that Ken Cox, um, who used to be the biologist for, state fisheries biologist for this watershed, he said that he knew there should be a bigger culvert and there was a barrier to passage, but then he really liked that big pool. There's a big deep pool at the down, you know, because the culvert's too high, it, there's a, a big waterfall, you know, coming down. And so, there's been a pool carved out and he thought that was really important, holding place in the summer for big trout. So, given that you are gonna replace the culvert, now there still may be pool formations or whatever, but I just wondered if, if part of the replacement already does involve or could involve, you know, structures, current shelter structures or other dynamic structures to create at least a small pool or something for that kind of holding.
Within the project reach for culvert replacements, especially we like to just make sure that it's stable so that we don't, like, the integrity of the structure is the most important part for these projects.
Okay.
Um, but we have talked about in the future doing habitat restoration upstream.
Okay.
Um, and the, the value added really is that there's access to.
Right, and there may be, and there may be, there may already be pools upstream that if they had access to them, instead of all, you know, seventeen of them in the big pool, they could be spread out in a, okay, that, that makes sense. I, I'd really like to be sure that, that it makes sense to see how the culvert works and settles and what the dynamics are. But I, I really would want to keep that on the, on the, on the jet, on the list as something to come back to and make sure that if they've gained the ability to access the upper stream and move through that culvert, they haven't lost the whole art, the, the hot wa, hot weather refuge or whatever you call it.
Right, yeah.
So, okay, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, I've heard about that too, kind of, Cox is kind of urging not to.
He was like, he was like, not a priority, you know? It's like, but I still think it's important to do it, I also think it's important to do it for the road sake because, um, if the culvert isn't big enough to really, it's gonna wash out and that'll be worse than the streaming, which they try anyway.
Yeah, and.
So, I think it's a great, great, great project, yeah.
Yeah, so, your actions tonight are to authorize signature of the operations and maintenance agreement and the, and the lanes that have that restoration agreement.
Let's go, and that, that authorizes them to work in the town right of way and all that kind of stuff.
It'll, it's also a binding property, property thing that says, okay, we will do this maintenance. It's all regular bridge maintenance. And it's very, very normal, nothing we don't look at to, uh, we will have to do some measurements annually, uh, which we can do at low bar or something because that's not a big deal. And, uh, and with different habitat restoration agreement, I didn't see anything that really stood out. It was, it's, yeah, it's access and we're not going to sue them and, uh, and things like media, like, we're, we wanna be, we wanna get both out of this project for conservation and bragging about it as part of that, good. Um, we should, this is a really cool project, it's been years in the making with lots of money that isn't ours. So, um, so both, I don't see any reason not to.
And they don't need a, a permit from us, this disagreement covers any.
So, we will need to file a standard right of way construction permit, that is a like half hour permit.
Okay.
I have a, I have, then, they're, they're prominent enough that they're sitting in the four times around something.
Okay.
And they typically take like more than half an hour to.
Okay, and the, the other thing I would just say is, um, while the road is closed, the closure materials have to be as strong and as visible as you can make them. Because like when they were replacing the Benedict, uh, Hollow Benedict Brook Culvert, there was nothing there. I mean, there was like a complete absence of road, there were signs, there were barriers, and people on motorcycles thought it didn't apply to them. So, some of them almost went swimming. So, never underestimate people's ability to, to do that kind of stuff, yeah.
Um, that was one thing I was gonna ask about because I had mentioned to Nick that it might help the contractor, depending on their capacity, if they could have hauling support during the project, um, from like the town highway, being able to haul out bill material that's excavated. Um, and then I was also gonna ask about signage, if that could be provided by the town.
We have signage, that should be very easy. All in capacity is up before, do we want to divert highway resources to this project?
What is this, is this August?
Oh, so I was just looking for.
The conservation fund prefers we be done before August first.
Okay, so July?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's gonna be, well, this is ultimately. And so, you're expect, like, what would, how many days of, do you think we could get?
I mean, I think that it'd be good to get that estimate.
Probably two in the front end.
Okay. But I don't, I don't see how we can make this commitment, we don't even know for sure who's gonna be on vacation, who's not gonna be on, we don't know if we'll have a full staff at that time. I'm not at all averse to providing this service, I just don't think, see how we can commit to it now.
Who's the, who's the contractor?
We haven't hired someone yet, so we'll put it out to bid like early spring.
Okay.
Um, we've worked a lot, um, projects I've done with John Thomas, he's out of Hampton, New York.
This is a federal one, right? That, and we've got a bond, you gotta have all the federal strings.
Yeah, so, but need back you key.
I need back you key.
Yeah, I was gonna reach out to him, um, he's at least looked at a couple of projects.
The other one possibility would be Noel Dido.
Noel.
Um, and the other thing is even if we can't haul the fill, it's possible we might be able to use the fill, I have no idea.
Or we can give you a, a location to dump the fill or something like that, we might be able to collaborate on that.
Well, we'll be able to come for something, but we just can't.
We can't, we can't commit, I mean, because we don't know the dimensions of it, we don't know where our crew's gonna be, you know, it's like.
And I could always a- ask them to put that as a separate bid item.
Yeah.
And if the town can do it, then they just won't get that part of the.
It's good to have in case we are in a position where we can, we, I would assume that we would not, but, and, and planning on it as if we would not from a monetary perspective, just knowing the itching load of the, the next, uh, couple of seasons. But, um, but yeah, we, i- if it's, if we can, it would be, is the way of.
Yeah, um, and depending on how the bids come in, maybe I decide it's not even worth having you guys worry about it.
There's also, um, I don't know if you've been in touch with the landowner, who, where's he, he owns the section that's down towards three thirteen in New York. And he also, I can't remember his name, he also owns the quarry, he owns the quarry, the old quarry that's there.
Our foreman knows him, we've.
Um, I, I have the name somewhere, I just can't remember it. Um, and he, he's been supportive of, you know, back home projects in the past, if there was.
On Murray Hollow?
Yeah.
John McGuire, yeah.
Yeah, so like if there was just a, a problem of we don't know where to put this stuff, maybe, maybe you could put it in his quarry. I mean, there's a lot of room in his quarry.
That's true.
And there's also stone in his quarry, so if you need stone, you might want to check that out. You know what I mean, you know what, what I mean, don't you?
Yeah, and I, I have this number, it's amazing.
So, do you need a separate motion for each of these?
No, we need one mo, we can have one motion that says authorize the operation management and habitat restoration agreement.
Okay, I make a motion to authorize two documents for the Murray Hollow Culvert project, the landowner agreement and the operations and maintenance agreement for the culvert replacement.
Well, second.
And authorize town administrator to sign.
And, and I further move to authorize town administrator Zias to sign.
A second. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to authorize and, uh, the habitat restoration agreement with the landlord and the operation and maintenance plan for the project. And authorize town administrator Zias to sign, send proposals, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess you're all set.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thanks a lot.
Interesting, maybe thinking about July.
I know.
Fishing tackle doesn't look really relevant, right? Well, I mean, ice fishing.
It's shitballs. All right, five point two, three thirteen speed discussion, this is a re, rehash of the, uh, speed discussion we had earlier in the year and, uh, the, some of the local residents have submitted a petition with signatures.
And was this down towards, um.
This is from the existing forty mile an hour out to the forty mile an hour just shy of wayside. Making that whole stretch at forty mile an hour.
Right.
That was past, um, Pickering's Road.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
The other road there, I can't, I know Wilcox is right there, but there's several.
Sycamore.
Sycamore, uh, yeah, not that far.
Wilcox and all that, right?
Wilcox, all of those right there.
Forwall.
I think it's back before that even still.
Even further back than that, but anyway, not past wayside.
They did give the.
That's already forty.
It's forty all the way back through, past Bridge Gun through South and almost to Pickering's Greenhouse. And then from there to the forty mile an hour here on this.
It isn't forty, it's thirty five.
Yeah.
Thirty five, as soon as you pass the turn to Rebel Road, coming, the west out, you know? So, between, between wherever it was and that, I think it's forty five, and then it goes down to thirty five.
Yeah, so this is the, this stretch that covers the threats that were discussed and this is the good point. And my plan is if authorized here to pursue a conversation with V Trans about this, because we do have speed studies from this and the inner area, to have a conversation with V Trans that would, would cause them to consider the, uh, a, the speeding as a petition as well as the speeding as previously discussed by others on the inner segment of thirty five hundred, I was like.
And I mean, and another. And another, another thing about that stretch is there is a fair amount of activity in a number of the houses along there. There's not up, it's not full of houses, but there are houses and many of the driveways do not have great lines of sight.
Come down.
You know, like, like, the, I don't want to mention people's names, but there's, there's, there's driveways coming down from the hill and those are a little bit sketchy and, and I just, so I just think that shaving five miles an hour off would make it safer for, for people going in and out of those driveways as well. So, um, I don't know where we're gonna get with this thing.
Ultimately, it's a V Trans decision, right?
It is, but I would, I would, and it's also, it also, it to some extent, it's forty, it's, it's forty for this huge stretch and then it's forty five and then it's thirty five, I mean, why not just say forty, you know?
No, I mean, yeah, because it's.
It's harder for people to get down to thirty five after they've been.
On this end, it does drop down to forty and then thirty.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, so it's more gradual, okay, all right. You're right, no, you're right, I'm thinking about that, you're right.
Very short.
You're right, and your hoist, hoist, Cyril Hoist.
It varies.
It's forty, Cyril Hoist, yeah.
It absolutely varies very quickly in the course of five miles and see if one keeps.
Yeah.
And.
I'm down, I'm down.
Yeah, yeah.
And it may be that, that the crux of this is to seek some greater harmonization on the western segment of, so, a request to consider either making everything forty five, everything forty, not everything fifty.
Not everything forty five.
But, but for V Trans to look at this, review our speed data, um, and then, and consider that as well. And any generalized reduction in speed on the western segment would be reasonably well paired with a reduction in speed on the inner segment, which, um, which I know Mr. Lange has done a lot of work to bring to our attention, we've done a speed study as well there. Uh, and we do have fresh data for them to review as well. So, we can ask, so, what I'm seeking here is a sense of the board of what do you want me to talk with V Trans about? Um, what is the mandate here of, should we be hoping for, what is petition, should we be hoping for?
What, what exactly does the petition say?
The petition says forty for the segment between House X and House Y.
Okay, so in other words, that would mean that starting, what is it, before the cover bridge, um, it would be forty all the way until it's thirty five?
Yes.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Makes more sense than.
And I don't want it, Dan, to even have the thought of having all of that forty five, because that makes things worse. So, don't even mention that.
I, I won't.
So, so either it comes down or it stays the same, I don't want to give them any idea.
We will provide them with the speed data and they ultimately, they will use the, this is a data, they will use the data triggered by our request. So, when I have them here at this table in our annual spring meeting, uh, that can be a topic of discussion with V Trans.
And really, when you put it from the, the perspective of the speed limit changes five times in five miles, you know, that's like not making a lot of sense. I mean, if it goes down to forty and it's over here and it's gonna be forty again over here, why is it going up to forty five? During a, a period where there is, there's the pull off, where people are getting in and out of, you know, vehicles, there's driveways. I just don't know if it makes.
And a member of V Trans sent a petition.
There you go.
That carries in.
We'll see.
We'll see.
It certainly matters, um, but yeah, so it sounds like that, that forty five concept is the number one thing you want me to, to discuss.
The forty five concept?
Or not, the thirty, the forty mile per hour concept, the forty mile per hour concept for the western segment. And is there a sense, uh, to seek a reduction in speed on the inner segment?
I don't know what you mean by the inner segment.
So, the thirty five mile per hour, so going down to thirty or twenty five.
I think if we could, if we could, we, if the thirty five was really enforced, I think it would be all right. Um, I guess I'm, I would be concerned that we're asking for too much, now maybe we should ask for a law and they might get, so, but what if they gave us thirty and they didn't left, didn't give us the forty?
I think you should ask for the forty.
I mean, I wouldn't mind it being thirty going past my house, you know, I mean, I would be fine with that, but why not ask for what really would make things safer?
And we can also simply say, hey, we don't have any particular stance on the inner segment, here's the data, if you'd like, if you want to build this into a more cohesive project and be reviewing all of the speed on three thirteen.
Sure, sure.
Hey, we have these two data points.
We give it to them, but we're not making a specific ask.
Yes, yes, that, that sounds like a sensible.
Just have them review.
Yeah, and we can go from there.
Okay, so do you need a motion?
I don't, I think that's a sense of the board.
Yeah.
I don't beg you, can you get any yards from anybody?
I appreciate that.
I'm fully aware that the speed, much like what we did in town here, all the speeds were thirty five miles an hour, right? Now they're twenty five, the reason was not that people are gonna go twenty five, but they're gonna go the prevailing speed that's closest, forty five, not thirty five. It's thirty five where we get forty, forty five, fifty through town. So, we were reduced to posted speed limit.
But I also, but I also think that if, that if it was forty that whole way, you wouldn't be saying, oh, forty five, we go up to forty five and then all of a sudden, wait a minute, you know, it's like.
Forget the speed, so right down or whatever, yeah.
So, you're coming around into the thirty five mile an hour resort at forty five, instead of coming into it at forty. Because the fact that it drops down at Cyril Hoist, people don't necessarily drop down. So, you know, so, but if they were already there, you know, then that was.
It's, it, it also pairs well with number of long term priorities of town, thinking about the concept of, of handling different types of traffic, three thirty angles, a bunch of different types of traffic and, and, and the fall in particular, you have late peepers that, it is a magical view when you're going thirty five miles per hour there. And I've seen, and one of those speed studies was in late peeper season, so we have data on what that looks. Um, so, in any case, I have my mandate, I will go from there.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, I have Roman Bridge standards, we just need a simple, uh, motion to approve it, it's something we did over here and sign it as it goes around.
I make a motion to approve the certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory with town of Arlington dated February tenth, twenty twenty five.
A second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by, uh, Matt to approve the, the Roman Bridge, or I'm sorry, I, yeah, Roman Bridge standards for twenty twenty five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the agreement for the White Creek plowing, which we did some, you know, also. It's just, just a standard contract and if I'm not mistaken, is it?
For this current plow year.
Okay, so it's for twenty twenty five.
Yeah, a little late.
A little late. They had a changeover in town supervisor over there and I think this one fell into cracks in White Creek, so.
Does it go back to the?
Yeah, it is retroactive to, in November first, which is the start date of all the previous contracts.
Have they been?
Yes, they have.
They have been.
They have done so much back hoping that's honoring that good faith over here.
And I need to sign it.
Just you?
Yeah, uh, yeah, so just.
So, I make a motion to approve, um, the plow agreement with the town of White Creek for plowing of certain designated areas at certain times, um, as presented in the agreement of February tenth, twenty twenty five. Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the agreement and authorize myself to sign it with White Creek for the plowing of Black Hole Hollow, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
We've got a lot of hollows, Murray Hollow.
Yeah, many hollows, you have hollows going all down. Um, so, on new business. So on new business. The MERC, we are we are starting in earnest with municipal energy resilience program. The hundred and eighteen thousand dollar project. To improve the weatherization of town hall and the town garage. On. After previous advisement, SLIF board, we. We filed for this. We were awarded the grant and now this is the the technical assistance piece of this. Um you we previously had a discussion about whether we would see technical assistance on this. And this is a proposal from Centerline Architects. Um it's it's not printed because there's nothing we have to physically sign tonight as part of the proposal. But it was included in your board packets. Um it included a scope of work and. And then also their statement of qualifications that they use to uh get the. Initial project or get on the shortlist to be offered to towns by the regional commission. Uh which vetted this and is doing regional management of all the grants. As noted in the annotated agenda. B C R C is willing to come to contribute up to fifteen hundred dollars for this stage of this effort of the as part of the project. So. Their their total cost for. For their uh for their project management um and along the scoping design. And preparation of permits um is. Is eighty-three hundred and fifty dollars of which the uh B C R C would contribute a the fifteen hundred. So it would be.
Eighty-five hundred and thirty dollars.
Yes.
Not eight.
Eight-five zero. Um so the town share would be seven, zero, three, zero. So what I'm seeking is approval of the award of for. For. What we're calling it, stage, stage one of the. Or task one of the municipal energy resilience program planning work. Uh to Centerline Architects for a for some not to exceed seven, zero, three, zero.
Uh for. So I have a question in reviewing their scope of work and under task one, project scoping and conceptual design. Seems like we're missing a really important component in that, which would be what is the ROI on this project? Or sum of projects? And what is our cost savings over our current solutions that are in place?
So that work or the best work that we have on that was part of a previous study. Uh a previous energy assessment by a company whose name is absolutely slipping now. Uh but we do have documentation on that. I will note that all of this uh project is state funded. Um these are the items that are in this, the deep back, the building envelope work. Is all in specifically listed as part of the scope of work.
No, I get that. I just. The thing is it's state funded, but it's still taxpayer dollars and at the end of the day, if it's not gonna save us any money, is it even worth doing?
It it certainly like we we could ask them to do this analysis. It would certainly balloon this stage of the project costs. Um the the.
Is it even worth doing if it's not gonna save us money?
Yeah, this the the energy analysis does have some work on this, if not as good as we would hope. But it does have that that and I can get that over to you guys if you want to feel this motion or this.
Just look at some of the, I don't mean interrupting. At some of their additional services, because we've had this study done, we wouldn't need A, which their their rough estimate. Costs is two to five thousand. For their, what are they calling it? Uh existing conditions documentation.
Right.
We kind of already have that done, right? So we wouldn't need need to worry about that, but they also get us in here for anywhere from three to eight hundred.
So they're gonna get you there.
Three to eight hundred if they have to come to a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, these people, we would not intend that they would be doing a lot of interface of the board. We want them to be doing. Back end work to make sure that we can get the permits. Helping prepare the horrible work, which has to be prepared for both the garage and this building. Um this building much more complicated. Um the garage, the state will pretty much. Wave its hands and say.
The state is gonna say that this is a starred building, even though it has vinyl siding on it. My understanding is once you have vinyl siding, you've got nothing.
Once you're over fifty years old, you are in historic review.
So if the vinyl siding is over fifty years.
If the building is over fifty years old, you being eligible for the reg for the national register versus being.
You can't be on the national register. Okay, all right, all right, all right.
Just because you're not not eligible for national.
Just mean the state doesn't care about it.
Or yeah, or this or this type of used historic work review has to be done, which nicely is. But for every building over fifty years old, so think if this is only one thing, think about that for the town garage is. Almost laughable, but we we know that the town, the state is very, very willing to understand the conditions. What these buildings are used for and um ultimately historic review for the purposes of of this. Of the state side of this is mostly those windows and.
Where you replace the windows.
But yes, the remaining windows that we have not replaced, that hallway, seven windows in this store.
I mean, that to me, replacing the windows, okay, I can get.
Yeah.
On with replacing the windows. Air sealing, I can get on with air sealing, the insulation, yes. The problem is, I I have the heat pump system in both the town garage and the town hall. And what I really wanna know is, is it gonna cost us twice the amount to operate fifty percent more, twenty percent more to operate? Or are we actually gonna save money?
And when we were talking about this, it was presented that we would do the town garage first. Because the heating system there is not particularly good. And see how it worked before we did the town hall because of. That very issue. I mean, it's not that we have the greatest system in the world, but I have heard people who end up with five hundred, six hundred thousand. Six, seven thousand, six hundred dollar electricity bills.
On one of them, so yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so so fossil fuels, you know, electricity. So I I um. And I guess the other thing that I'm a little concerned about is do we know that the state money is actually there?
It is. Um this is all state sourced money. Um the state had a bunch of money around to make it work. Um but the way that this project works, and I just had a conversation with the the regional mission. Use the regional liaison of the state. And that person said, the way the hierarchy is within the grant agreements and within the state plan is. You get. First building envelope is the highest priority except for windows. Um then.
Wait, but what does the building envelope mean?
Insulation.
What? They're gonna blow insulation into all these walls?
No, this bill, this building is added insulation and then air sealing, so. Someone goes around with a spray gun, full of spray. But not a light, not layers, spray foam everywhere, not something comprehensive. It's air sealing, but. The the obvious area is of air infiltration. For instance, my office has some really obvious.
You have old windows too, don't you?
No, they have new ones over there, but there's there's a.
Gas.
There's uninsulated gas.
Yeah.
Um things like that, number one priority, added insulation, pitch it also, the pitches of the town garage. Highest priority, then it goes to heat plant, then it goes to. To uh the brain, the windows. That is the the standard order that the state expects these projects to proceed in. Um that that is something that if we would like to to, I can circulate. Um the energy analysis, if that energy analysis is insufficient for you guys, we could. Uh contact Centerline and ask them to do some. A separate project that would analyze that or 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 ask them to do the. To include this analysis in the scope of work and get us a another slightly higher number. Uh that's something I'm happy to go and be at the Centerline to. Get that information um as part of their.
I mean, the proposal should be included, but. Uh the, you know, i- in my mind, it's air sealing, it's insulation, it's windows. Windows are really part of the envelope and they should be a higher priority because then then it's heat.
All the windows in the building, at least on the second one or so.
There there are exactly seven and one of those is a one really don't need to replace the downstairs bathroom window.
Yeah.
That has the frosted glasses already.
Right.
Already relatively good and it's the three in this uh in the supply room, the one in the back hallway are the three of four biggest ones. Um almost all of them, I believe all of them have. The window inserts from window dressers in them that we that we got a couple of years ago. So all of those ones that have a window inserts, the one, the one in the in the front foyer.
What about these windows on the stairwell, stairwell?
The those were not included in the scope of work uh that.
But those are old, aren't they?
They are old, but they were not, they were not being necessary to be replaced in the as part of the project veritas. Uh which was the firm that did the analysis.
That's like not making any sense at all because you can close the supply closet door, nobody's in there, but this. These windows are sucking heat out of the building.
I will never stand up for project veritas. I am not. They their their company reviews have been horrible. Um the. If you talk to the regional energy manager, she'll tell you she's not happy with a lot of the project veritas reviews. We got one of those unfortunately. That is the binding study on this project. So ultimately, that is that is the the vendor that the state lined up for us and we got. Probably the worst vendor of all these. Um we're working with with sub op management. As we scope this.
And this whole thing is gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, it is. And in that, yes, it is a hundred thousand dollar change project, as much of this as we can do. Um uh from the list of. Insulation first, heat pump set or heat plant second, windows third, that is the list, the way the state defines it and. And that's the priorities that we don't have say in what the priorities are. It's just a matter of how far down the list we.
Where would the heat pumps go?
The presumably behind the building in in some way. It could also go on top of the. Vault would be an option for a compressor on this wall. Um at the garage.
But then how does it come in? How does it get blown in?
They run down.
Small, small.
And it works very well for her. It works in terms of. Heating in the winter and cooling in the summer. It works really well, but the fixture is here and the blower inside is right there, so. Um I mean, I'm wondering about how efficient it is if you have to have these narrow ductworks.
This stage would be would be one of the pieces where they designed the heat pump system of where it where would the heads be to efficiently heat this space.
Well, yeah, and how are they running the refrigerant lines? Because I mean, we've all seen the building that's got the. The inter duct on the outside for the refrigerant lines that snake all over it and it doesn't seem historic.
And that is why we have historic review.
You know, Cynthia, thank you for refreshing my memory on the previous discussion that we had, and I do remember that around trying in the town garage first. And my other question would be, so we put a six ton air pool heat pump system in there. Are we pulling out the existing furnace?
No existing.
And also, we have had periodic discussions about whether we're going to have a new town garage. So would we be, I mean, and we don't have one.
Well, it's kind of.
Often, we've talked about somebody. Talked about, I mean, it's not a good structure. They're there now. We're here, so.
I why would we apply for it? Because ultimately that building's heat system is. Is challenging in a number of ways and it's insufficient in a number of ways. We're not getting the B Qs we need to make it. A comfortable work environment.
Right.
But everything in part of this project is meant to be supplementary to the existing system. It does not remove anything.
I I totally support.
Always give us the choice to revert back.
I I support going ahead with the town garage. Um I still have questions about the the plans for the town hall. Um what about this question that you that you guys were saying that they were charging two thousand for something that? We already have or was it?
Documents and.
Different.
Yeah, okay, I can read those.
Existing condition documentation, create existing condition drawing in CAD format for PDF drawings or from onsite measurements.
Which we don't have for this building. I will note, we don't have those kind of drawings for any of our. And.
And.
That's an additional service that.
What about doing those drawings for the garage?
Right.
Is that included?
I think that is for both buildings.
Yeah, and.
Well, and in the context of of a a project that ultimately could be over a hundred thousand dollars, it's not a large amount of money for the. The planning and the project is always as good as the planning. Um I think the problem is, you know, we do, we commit to these things and then we don't think about them for a while and then they come back and we're like, you know, what? And I apologize, I apologize Nick for that, but it's just. There's just too much stuff flowing through my head.
We only got one proposal on this from central project managers. This is this. This is not, I'm not, I've never been a stand-up for BTS either. This has been a project, a program that is being run by. A state entity that does not typically manage a style of grant and they're showing it um at every stage and. Um and they've given a lot of conflicting information. There have been repeated delays. We would have really wanted to be at this stage, I mean, this conversation lasts long. Um but for. The lays related to whatever excuse the state wants to give, flooding and all that fun stuff. Um but this pro this program has been about two years in the making to get to here.
And you think it's worth continuing?
I think it's a hundred thousand dollars in heat plant in or in in energy efficiency efforts that. Will is one-time money that we will never have an opportunity to.
I I think just from that, it makes sense to do it, even if the priorities aren't quite.
Yeah.
What we what we want and presumably if at some point, you know, if we do the garage and then we think this doesn't make sense for the town hall. Presumably, you say, we don't wanna do it.
And you guys can say, hey, the garage is priority number one. If your sense it is. Of within this scope of work, that we want to complete as much of the garage as we can.
Yes.
Because that building pitches are easy to access. You gotta get a lift and you're stapling insulation.
And also that building is not sufficient. That's the building where.
Be nice to give our employees the the some better conditions than what they got there today.
Yeah, it's it's cold there. David's there a lot. I'm there a lot. It's. It is a deeply challenging place.
Well, and the bays, I mean, you know, the doors, I mean, it's very hard to hear.
Temperature sensitive materials and equipment.
Yeah, yeah. So I think I think if we could put in that the highway, the highway building is the biggest thing.
And I think the other caveat is that we do get the um hardship funding. From the state ahead of time versus us outlaying this money and they're waiting.
And then the state saying, oh, yeah, we don't have it.
Give us the money first.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. All right. So what are we? So what do we need?
What would they authorize the town administrator to negotiate a? A final contract for for um with with Centerline Architects. For architectural and engineering services. That way we can work, we can include. The the final numbers of what they actually need here. Um and then also authorize application for a hardship waiver for this for. For the municipal energy resilience program. So authorize the town administrator to to. Um work on a final scope of work or something to that effect for architectural engineering services. And then hardship.
And what about, we're not gonna mention B C R C, that's.
There's.
I make a motion to authorize. The town administrator to negotiate a final contract with Centerline Architects for architectural and engineering services. In relation to the M E R P project planning. And further authorize application, the town administrator to apply for a hardship waiver. From the state for the funding of the project. Does that sound?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and signed by Glenn. If there's no more questions about the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Now, this is this is the most terrifying and exciting state program that we've ever been part of, in part because of the very strange.
Boring, you want boring.
When when I heard that they were developing this B P S, I I cranged and said, oh, no, and that was two years ago, so. Okay, moving on to much better run state programs. Wastewater Priority List Reauthorization. Um last year, you gave me um. Authorization to. Get our name on the list for wastewater funding at state level in the future. Um. Another year has passed, another year, we we need to re-get our name on the list. I just need an authorization to. Um resubmit our uh application for priority listing. Uh for wastewater improvements in the. Uh for wastewater improvements in the town of Arlington. I will note, this does not in any way commit us to anything. Get our name in with some information.
To be on the list.
Yeah, place holder.
To keep our plates in line.
That's exactly. Don't, don't get kicked out of line because we didn't file our paperwork this year.
Right. I make a motion to um approve of the wastewater priority list reauthorization. This is to approve the reauthorization of a priority list application for wastewater projects. Associating with the existing art week engineering study for the Arlington Water Department. Um we, it's a motion to stay authorize staying on the state list.
A second. Motion made by Cynthia and sent by Matt to uh stay on the wastewater priority list and reauthorize the same. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Next is the Cambridge fire coverage agreement. We do this every year as we recall and basically there's two copies here and you just have to authorize. The contract and to allow me to sign for it.
Um are there any changes to the contract?
It's literally.
Um Jimmy, have you seen?
I did, I went through it. Uh the one. Thing that I wanted and which I did. That if they respond to a call in the Arlington district. That they are to contact Washington County Fire Control, who is supposed to notify us, the Arlington Fire Department of the call.
Of the fact that they responded. Because otherwise you might not know.
Correct. And if it's grass and brush fire, they are not um obligated to fight it if there are no structures endangered. Um those were the two things that I had been looking for.
That's great. Good job.
I think Nick went over last year and saw somebody and.
The superintendent over the credit department there. Briefly, yes, everything that we were, that I was hoping for and that I, I, we know there have been some failures on that, that chain of communications. So if we ever hear of another failure of chain of communications, we'll bring that up at a future rally with some more teeth to that. And say that there's some form of penalty if that doesn't. Be it forfeiture of payment for the call.
That's what I think, we just need to. And we need to track, we just need to track that. There's a reference to two copies. I actually only see one copy here.
There should be two physical copies. One has the sticky note on it, one has the. Yes, they're not.
Alright, I don't know if you see.
Yeah, one's ours, one's theirs.
Alright, I make a motion to approve of the. Um what am I calling this? Cambridge fire coverage agreement as presented at this meeting and authorize. Arlington Select Board Chair Dan Harvey to sign said agreement.
Motion made by Cynthia and sent by Jamie to authorize the renewal of the uh Cambridge fire agreement. And authorize myself to sign for it.
You already have.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Uh fee waiver for the.
So this is uh, we have a fee schedule now for youth department. Can we end in those rules? We have the ability to waive fee for various organizations. Anybody get a pause really? It's, but it's a case by case basis. This is the Arlington Youth Baseball Association making a request for waiver.
So that will waive five hundred dollars with the park fees, one, one for one hundred fifty dollar fee for for both the baseball and softball.
So I would support that waiver.
So.
Yeah, I I don't think you're gonna read any disagree.
I make a motion to waive the fees involved in using the Arlington Recreation Park. Fields for the Arlington Youth Baseball Association activities. Baseball and softball activities.
Well, second, motion made by Cynthia and sent by Matt to prove the waiver of the fees for the Arlington Youth Baseball Association. For both softball and baseball.
Who needs to sign? That's just for the permit probably.
Yeah, that's the permit. We don't actually have to have to do that. I will write in there that says.
Now we have liquor licenses. We have a third class restaurant and bar license and an outside consumption permit for Bronwyn's on seven A North.
They get new forms, they don't have the old one that was.
These are printed from the web.
I make a motion to authorize an application for the third class restaurant and bar license and an outside consumption permit. For liquor for Bronwyn, what is it called? Bronwyn's, just Bronwyn's, just Bronwyn's, yeah, for Bronwyn's. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Cynthia and sent by Glenn to print the third class restaurant and bar license and the outside consumption permit for Bronwyn's.
And that's doing business as nineteen fifty four Metropolitan Inc.
Those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Is it just verbal or something?
Yep.
And then the next one is.
Okay, I make a motion to approve a second class license, a tobacco license and a tobacco substitute endorsement for Arlington Deli Incorporated. Uh motion to approve.
Well, second.
Motion made by Cynthia and sent by Matt to approve a senior class uh license, a tobacco substitute endorsement. And a tobacco license for uh Arlington Deli Incorporated. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Could we go back just one second to the town hall energy? I just wanna give you a sketch and the mortar sketch of what is and isn't insulated. When we redid the new, the old post office for the treasurer, the listers, the zoning administrator and the air common area. That was all insulated with spray foam. The foundation was all sprayed, the the ledge around the bottom of the foundation on the inside was all insulated.
All the way around.
Because there were some issues with condensation under Robbins, they ripped up the floor and it all. So all of that was insulated. That's done. There's poly over the entire floor. Keith and I crawled down there. It's a crawl space. So you literally are crawling through it, we crawl through and put all the poly out to keep the ground moisture down. But as far as from this floor up, that's insulated. But these walls, the, they're not as insulated as they could be. There's, there's a drop ceiling here because this was.
On top of the drop.
No insulation in the attic.
So the insulation is here and that's why. You have wires in two hundred places breaking because of the weight of the insulation.
And and there's a, this gap from the top of this drop ceiling to the attic floor is about three feet. There's like a collar that you have to find.
So there's a dead airspace in there. But the walls, the reason his room is so cold. There's no wall, no insulation in these walls or that whole side all the way to the ground.
Well, and that.
And that's why, if you ever go, no, no, it's not. But just so you know, how inefficient. The only real insulated envelope is right here. And it's, it's not even the floor, it's just the walls. But that's all spray foam insulation, so. Just uh quick, and then if you go down the stairs. The, the, and you'll see the spray foam coming out of the cracks in the stairs. That's the bathroom down there and that's why that doesn't freeze. But that, that, the low point of those stairs, it's probably the coldest place.
The north side and yeah.
And the insulation, you know, it's clayboards and eighteen sixties vintage.
Hey, they didn't expect.
Energy was cheap.
Problems because the wind was blowing through.
So anyway, that's just the the historical rundown of, it it needs a lot of insulation, but a lot of it isn't even practical to do.
But I think also, nobody's living here, you know, so um so if you can deal with the windows and the leakiness and.
All of these upstairs windows on this side and that side.
Well, and we might want to, you know, after, if this project comes to completion and we've done a lot, we might eventually wanna replace those two windows just on our own, you know.
Yeah, it, we, we have savings in in our.
But like, but like making your office more comfortable is way more important than those two windows because nobody's in, no one, nobody's living in those rooms.
Some of that is gonna, because we have some of this mold and wall, some of that is absolutely gonna be corrected with some air sealing. Because there is a good like block about like the size of this that is just. But figure the Pepsi out by wall um in the corner. I I hadn't noticed it for a long time and I opened it and I wandered and I. Bro, I grabbed the flashlight and took a look and like, yep, that'd be inside of the left bird outside, so.
Okay.
But well, but that's the kind of thing that can be addressed, the air sealing, at least some of the little, like the gross.
I mean, but that sounds like, that sounds like that also might be something to be patched. I mean, on the inside, I mean. Drywall or plaster or something, you know, it's like.
Probably uh like some kind of plate or of some sort. It's behind the radiator. So it's a tricky spot to get tools in to get.
It's probably why it's there.
I have a temporary board up just to at least block the drift, the draft, so it's not so cold on me, but. But that's the kind of thing you you can at least address with some air sealing. And there's a couple of other holes in that wall from like dead telephone.
Well, and also it it's gone through different life cycles, you know, with being the barber shop and everything.
I mean, even right before I came, you guys were still pulling out things.
Yeah, oh yeah, and the barber chair, yeah.
The beard's still in there. And so um in any case, yeah, we'll try to address as much as we can with it. We wanna get a comprehensive air sealing effort with a, a good or reputable contractor. Who's gonna do a comprehensive job. It's definitely something that, it's on the top of state priority. So.
And also, I, just for the record, I just wanna um, going on what Dan said, that those renovations were actually done by. Select board members and community volunteers. So all those renovations were done by select board members, including yours truly. Whatever she could. And um and and community volunteers and no property tax taxes used on those renovations.
You guys, what, a very small federal grant or a small state grant because of the giant check in there from when you got it. Um so we know that happened, but there wasn't a lot of funding, it sounded like. You guys really.
With the floor in Robin's office, there were like four nails to square into practice. Reggie Jennings was like cursing. He was like, he was like cursing.
We were in there with cameras pulling nails for eleven hours straight.
Anyway, so I just wanna, I just wanna remind people that because some of you may not realize that the post office was in there, that was not ours, you know, and so we've expanded into it. And um and I think it was a really heroic effort by um by so many select board members. As I say, I just did a little bit. Because I'm not that skilled, but anyway.
Okay, that's almost twenty five years ago at this point.
Unbelievable, no, 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 because I didn't even join the board until two thousand four, so.
So it would, it would have been like two thousand.
In the first, in the two thousand person, ten years.
Yeah, I think they had, well, there was another round before that of like ADA and stuff.
Yeah, but that was that. We didn't have any, any state funding for the renovations downstairs. It was all, it was all, um I mean, we had to buy the materials, but the labor was all volunteer, so. Alright, enough of that. What's next?
Okay, town meeting. Um budget, this is the mostly opportunity to take the budget sessions a week from Wednesday. Um it will be advertised thoroughly this week and Dan and I are gonna get together about presentation.
Five thirty in the auditorium? Five thirty at in the Mac auditorium. And then, and then town meeting itself would be six thirty or seven o'clock or eight o'clock. We go second, but we go second, don't we?
I think we do go second.
So we'll be like, we're like seven thirty or something like that. Alright, and I think, I think that um, I think we should, we should build on what we put in our report. Now we have more specifics and it, you know, I think if you guys can ready something, if I have a chance, I'll, I'll see if I think there are many points. I think we're gonna hear questions about speeding again because we often do. Um I wonder if you will get questions about the patterns of the raises. And I think it's important for us to be able to say what we can say without violating. Without identifying or violating issue. And just, just off the top of my head, one thing that I was thinking of. If somebody asked me, you know, just one on one, is I was saying, well, just hypothetically, just, could, could one say, well, hypothetically. There might be a different pattern of raises. For instance, if one, if one employee had been promised an evaluation and raise after six months. And they never got it, or if another employee got a raise during the year. And so, you know, I mean, did they, so that people would get a sense that one reason why our pattern of raises was different is that the history for these employees. Were different for different employees, so that doing, just like everybody gets three percent, didn't make sense to us. Because that didn't account to the fact that some people had already gotten raised or some people just started working. Or some people were promised a, an opportunity to have a raise and never got it. So I was just thinking if we could talk about it in hypothetical terms, that could you imagine a case for why people would have different raises? If there were these different factors and then not actually go into the details. So that was.
That we love this year's cycle level sets it and we have a policy of just doing it.
And also, and also, and I don't know if we really put this in the report, but when we, when we held the comp, the, the paid compensation. Fixed last year, that we still covered the cost, increased the total compensation with the health insurance and the, and the retirement. So that we were, people were still getting an increase in total compensation. And I know that doesn't satisfy many people, but I think the public will understand that. In terms of the health insurance. So even when we all have fixed, we still increased total cost and we still did that.
That's a very good way to put it to taxpayers and, and I'm not sure that taxpayers are gonna be so as concerned about, about that line item. I think there, there are more, and it's, we can also stand on a, on a really good, like people, the towns would have increased spending. Less than on a, or increased taxes loss in the last couple of years than any competitor town. Um we are, like, the last two years have been kind of spooky, but that doesn't mean the story is not, is not still true. That our tax rate increases from our municipality are if not the lowest, um I have, I don't track like Land Grove and. But among, among here municipalities, we are increasing taxes less.
And also, keep it in mind, remember, I think you were saying last time that we are still saving ten percent. Like ten percent of what's in the budget is saving, which is, which most of those other towns are probably not doing. Uh right, so I, but I think it's still worth pointing that out to people that, um and that's gonna make it, that's an investment in your future to do that kind of saving. So um, so that, those were, those were just some things because, and even if it isn't something of general concern, we know there are particular people. For whom it is a concern and they may ask, or they may be concerned about fairness, quote unquote.
Yeah, we should be fair to the. Any other thing, like, Bob's going to town meeting, Don's going into the budget session next week, any, that, this is just that item. If we had anything else to be talking about, that was it. If we don't, we can move on to the rest of it.
Just a matter of housekeeping on that, I would not be able to tell that.
The, the five thirty, the two nineteen, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Um but yeah, it was really successful last year. Um, but, yeah, it was really successful last year and drew, I think, almost a hundred and fifty.
And I think it helps you answer the questions for the taxpayers, so it doesn't take all night.
And it also helps us in terms of, of what to be ready with, and I think that there are some people who just really have a lot of questions about minutia. And this gives them a chance to do that, so that it doesn't hold up.
The more intimate room might get somebody out to say something that might not want to at a big, bigger venue.
I, I wonder whether the question of the Australian ballot is gonna be something that is gonna have a lot of discussion. And we have put it on the ballot, we have not taken a position as board, I don't think, saying we should do this or we shouldn't.
No.
We both, we all understand the advantages and disadvantages, and it's gonna be up to the voters, we're not gonna push them in any way.
That's a great approach to.
And we haven't, we, we haven't come off that way in, in public forum either. I mean, we haven't, no, not at all. We, we, it sounds like a pretty good idea, we'll put it out there.
Advantages and disadvantages, and we can go through those, you know, because people, because I don't think most people would think of the fact that you can't change the budget.
Mm-hmm.
If you are doing it Australian ballot, and I think that's, and I think that's some, but something that Arlingtonians have done in the past, and they need to understand that they're giving that up.
I don't know, or something like that, yeah.
I think before the meeting, we were talking about Sam. And the ability to, possibly, I mean, sorry.
Yeah.
But you're like, yeah, but you're like, this is a perfect example of how you might need to change that.
Yeah.
Three years ago, I was sitting here going to town meeting saying, are we gonna have to create the overtime budget because we had a weekend that costs us ten thousand dollars this coming weekend? Uh, and, and overtime, it was an enormous form that took an enormous amount of labor.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was, I was sitting here thinking, this is, if there is a time, this might be the time, and it still can't handle that meeting, so thank goodness.
Uh, again, I'm sorry that I won't be able to attend. I think the other, um, this budget session, I think it's great for the people of Arlington to come out and ask questions, and it really gives us an opportunity. That, you know, if we don't have the answer right then and there, we can tell them that we will get it for town meeting day, and we can be prepared to bring that answer back, so it's a great opportunity.
This session, this session on the nineteenth would be Zoom and would be available, right?
It's gonna be a public meeting, I'm gonna warn it and such.
I mean, whether Gina tapes it or not, it's up to them, but, but it would be Zoom.
It, it, we will have a, we'll have a Zoom feed available.
I don't remember Gina being there the past couple of years.
I'm not gonna warn, it's going to be, open meeting law has changed since we did this last year. We don't have the kind of workaround that were, that made it a information session, not a, quote unquote, public meeting. This is a public meeting. So, we, so we will, we will treat it, we, we will warrant, we will treat it, we, we will, we will post it online, we'll do all the things, anything of them doing tonight. So, um, we're prepared for that, um, you'll, you'll be getting those, those agendas and, uh, Zoom links and things like that in coming days.
Perfect.
Um, no, thank you.
Is there an executive session?
Unless any number.
Yes, please.
Yes, please, there we go.
Or personnel.
Personnel, okay.
Alright, uh, let's, is there any action to be taken out here, do you think?
Hard to say.
Okay. Um.
Should we do it now or do it after?
After.
We can do it after.
Can I do that?
Do you have anything on while we're doing that?
I have nothing on. Particularly that need, that, that's, that need to be verbalized at the.
I read through your TA report. Thanks to you and Andy for taking care of the stuff at the park then, um, because Willie was out.
I, my muscles have never felt that sore lifting those things, or, or that few pieces of, I don't.
They are not light.
They were.
No, they're material. Yeah.
They've been literally. Wind drive, that's all set, um, but yeah, they're, they're in the, the kids are in the garage, and they're, um, all set for re, be ready for install when, uh, time permits. And thank you, Jamie, for, for encouraging us not to unload them directly into the bathroom, so we don't have too little room to work.
You don't want room to work, I guarantee that.
Okay.
We would have stuffed them right in there and just dealt with them. Then you have to move them like three times.
Uh, I, I definitely don't wanna move them.
Looked like David Kessler at the Village Puddle the other day.
I make a motion, um, to approve check warrant report number WD three. Being the regular operating expenses for the Arlington Water Department dated two seven twenty-five. Um, key elements are supplies for the water department and chlorine for the water department. Motion to approve a total of six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to approve check warrant report WD three. For the water department, a total amount of six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next motion will be for the, um, operating expenses of the town of Arlington. I'll just highlight that two items. Towing sixteen thousand together are for salt, so there we go, and then, um. We have, uh, helmets, um, I'm thinking that's for the fire department, and that's from ARPA funding, and then we have fuel, to mild fuel. And such like expenses. I make a motion to approve check warrant report number three dated two seven twenty-five. The operating expenses of the town of Arlington, motion to approve a total of forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Well, second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the check warrant number four hundred and three, a total amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, alright, so, let's determine the reason for the executive session as a personnel matter.
I'll make a motion that a premature discussion of a personnel matter would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to determine the reason for the executive session as a, a personnel matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session for said discussion of a personnel matter and to allow Town Administrator Zias to stay in the room.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to, to enter into executive session to discuss said personnel matters, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Well, do we have to go anywhere?
Yeah, we can say here, right?
To go.
It is eight forty-six, we're wiping the regular session.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, is there any action to be taken?
No.
No, no, okay. Uh, any other business we brought before the board?
No. So, yeah, I have one other thing, um, fire department wise, Brian and I have been with the firehouse study coming up, and we've got a meeting on Wednesday. Um. We've been looking at a conference, it's called Station House. Station House, uh, Design Conference. In Arizona. Um, but we were looking at that, they've got almost two hundred architects and building firms and all that out there. It's a two-day, three-day conference, um, but it's all the newest stuff.
Phoenix, Eric?
Huh?
Is it in the Phoenix area?
Uh, Glendale, yeah.
Glendale.
Yeah.
I did see in the packet.
It was like thirty-five hundred dollars to send three people out there. So, it was something I was gonna bring up.
Think about. I also noticed that Centerline. In our packet, or energy, they did the Chester.
Yep.
Facility.
Yeah.
Centerline is a really, they've done a lot of really interesting public projects across the state. There, there have been that firm that, like, I did the interviews with them on the VCRC side, and was really impressed with their supporting targets.
Send you, you did.
Okay, but wait, I wanna come back to this. What, what would, what would this, how would we pay for this? Where would this come from?
So that's what we, Brian and I were talking and trying to figure out, would it come out of a training committee, our training budget, um, from the fire department? Are there any other funds that could be used to send three people out there?
When do you need?
With nothing in our budget.
It's not, the conference is in May.
Okay, so.
Um, so we've got a little time.
Like March.
It's sold out in March of last year.
You better start selling travel bars.
Yeah.
This is the kind of thing, with, that thing, you'd be bummed, what if it's.
I will send you the information on it, though.
It would be, I, I think it would be beneficial for some people to go, but.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I don't know where I'd find thirty-five hundred bucks without pulling something from, something we're gonna use.
Zoom it on.
It's, I.
You know, most conferences these days, you can participate with Zoom.
Not definitely.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Well, I, I'm not.
I will send it to you.
Um, what is, what is the status of the training budget? Have we been using that up?
We have not, we've been using the training budget, but there's a bunch of expenses, so if you're training this year, there'll be expenses, uh, for the days for classes.
Well, send us the information, and we can look at it, we can talk about it at the next meeting too, as well. There's gotta be another conference closer too. I mean, if we can't pull, pull this one off, what if we, there's one? Phoenix is a pain to get to.
It is.
It's hot.
Four hundred and twenty dollars round trip out of Albany.
It's not very expensive.
One, one stop, one way over.
What, Chicago, that way?
Yeah.
It's either Chicago or Charlotte sometimes.
I am always flying into Charlotte for some reason.
Or Atlanta, they do that one.
But it has to be at Atlanta. Anyway.
And in any case, we'll, we'll, we'll think about it, we'll see if we can make it back to you here.
I don't see, I mean, what is, what is our big issue with the firehouse? Is it where or is it what?
It's ultimately the.
Just overall building design. To do the design.
Yeah, the next step is.
So, are we, do we know where we want it to be?
Yeah, they've got it the envelope here, let me bring this up.
Are we, are we, are we Dietrich or where are we doing?
If the, the warehouse, we need to work on Dietrich. Uh, and I'm happy to share those documents, they're all fully written, or you can email us at the firehouse.
No, I, I just, it's just a, the, 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 my recollection with Dietrich, but I don't think that was unanimous.
As of right now, proposed building of twelve thousand square feet with drive-through bays, parking on both sides.
Um, just the fire department.
Just the fire department.
But yeah, if you wanna tell me.
It sits well in the envelope.
On your way out, I can just show you the, the statue design.
This is something that we were supposed to meet, what, last week and?
Yeah, Snow was gonna make it so we didn't have forum.
Yeah.
I know, because I didn't read.
If you're not gonna be here, and you're not gonna be here, Joe's already not here, are we gonna have forum again?
If not, I'm gonna make.
No, no, I'm gonna, I can be here Wednesday. I can be here Wednesday, it's Thursday that I can't be here for. You're good, Doc, you, you got CPR or something?
We got CPR tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like four nights out, if I come here.
Yeah, this is the.
Well, that's why I can't do Thursday, because I gotta go to Williston tomorrow.
Yeah, I was.
What did the?
That submit was.
Um, what's your email?
Just send it to Bykowski.
Um.
We have no more.
Is there no other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Glenn, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.